Ladies and gentlemen, I would call this meeting to order. Can I get the roll call, please?
Augie Pearson?
Here.
Dave Warnick?
Here.
Here. Thank you. Will you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We bow your heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, Lord. I ask that you watch over our elected body and our staff, Lord. Be with our police department and our first responders, Lord. Be with us as we're here tonight and as we leave, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
First on the agenda is Resolution 2022-11, the Circuit Rider Program. Town Administrator, do you have that?
Yes, I do. So if you remember, I think back in April, we talked about entering into a joint partnership with the town of Perryville to take the opportunity to receive funding from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's Town Manager Circuit Rider Program, which was created several decades ago, actually, and it originally used to provide funding for small communities that didn't have the resources, financial resources, to have a town manager, a town administrator. The program has since expanded to take on other types of professional services that you can enter into a joint agreement. And in this particular case, the towns of Perryville and Rising Sun would like to enter into a joint program to receive funding for a circuit rider grant writer, someone who would work for both towns a couple hours a week, trying to find basically pots of money, whether it be on the federal level, private sector, or state level, to try to secure money for different types of projects. We've been filling out the applications, the paperwork, and the last thing that needs to be completed is for the elected body to pass this resolution, and then we will submit that to the state tomorrow, and we should be good to go.
Would you like to read that into the record, Town Administrator?
Sure. So Town of Rising Sun Resolution 2022-11, a resolution authorizing and approving the town of Rising Sun's participation with the town of Perryville in the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's Maryland Town Manager Circuit Rider Program in fiscal year 2023. I'm going to skip the boilerplates at the beginning, get down to the fourth, whereas the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, the department administers and manages the Maryland Town Manager Circuit Rider Program, which provides financial assistance through grants to small cities and towns to build their administrative capacity and to hire professional staff to work as a circuit rider to multiple towns assisting with specific municipal functions and activities. And whereas the department provides funding for salaries and fringe benefits for circuits for a one-year period, the department anticipates having funds available to fund circuits in fiscal year 2023 with applications to participate in the program in fiscal year 2023 to be submitted to the department by June 14, 2022. And whereas the Maryland Commissioners believe that joining together with the town of Perryville to seek the creation of a circuit consisting of Rising Sun and Perryville and to share the services and cost of a circuit rider to provide grant writing services for the two towns will be in their respective interests. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Maryland Commissioners hereby designate and authorize the Town Administrator Calvin D. Barnenberger, Jr., to execute and deliver the appropriate information and documentation to the Town Administrator of Perryville for the purposes of submitting a joint application on behalf of the town of Rising Sun to create a circuit consisting of the towns of Perryville and Rising Sun and subject to approval of the application and the availability of appropriations to fund a circuit rider to participate in the program in fiscal year 2023. Be it further resolved, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent to the department and the town of Perryville. Be it further resolved that the Maryland Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun pass, approve, and adopt this resolution on this ninth day of June 2022.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2022-11? Warnick? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Town Administrator, fiscal year 2023 budget adoption, Resolution 2022-12, do you have that?
Yes, I do. So as we do every year, we have the resolution to formally adopt the operating budget for the upcoming year. In this case, we have a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2023 operating budget for the town of Rising Sun. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we went over some preliminary data, and the staff and I, we wanted to do a little bit more work on it. So you have that in front of you. There's a couple of items that I just wanted to highlight. One of the most important things is the tax rate for the town is being maintained the way it's been for the last couple of years. And this budget includes the hiring of two additional or new police officers, the purchasing of three police vehicles. It also includes the purchasing of some speed tracking signs, basically when you're driving down the road and you see the flashing sign that says you're going too fast or what your speed is. We have discovered a vendor that provides a more economical unit as opposed to having a tow-along trailer, as you often see on the side of the road. So we have in the budget the ability to purchase two of those portable signs. The significance of that is, as we know, and the chief knows better than anybody, that we get a lot of concerns from residents about speeding on various different streets. These signs will give the police department the ability to track what time of the day the speeding is taking place. It will also track the average speed above the speed limit that you're permitted to go so that the chief can then better allocate people for speed enforcement in a more efficient manner. Basically, what I'm saying is, if somebody comes in and complains about speeding on a particular road, the chief has to sort of estimate what is the best time to go and catch those speeders. Is it between two and five on a Wednesday evening? Is it on the weekend, whatever? By putting these signs up there, it will collect data of the number of speeders, their average speed, what time of the day, what day of the week they're doing it, and then he can more efficiently position a police officer in a vehicle to observe that traffic. So it'll help him be much more efficient and effective in deploying his personnel. As you're going through the budget, as is consistent with what we've done in the past, the not every department is revenue neutral. There's a lot of reasons why you don't have your departments revenue neutral. One, your departments like police and code enforcement are basically structured and designed to take care of the issues that are needed, not necessarily make money for the town. That's not what the intent is. They're both departments that deal with public safety and the general well-being and safety of our residents, and so you want to make sure that you have revenue in there to cover some expenses, but they are not revenue-neutral departments. As I said at the April meeting, as everybody is facing, even the homeowners and businesses, inflation is really high right now. So our budget projects essentially eight, upwards of eight percent increases in all of our expenses across the board. The one thing we were able to do, that I've let some of the board members know, is we were able to shop our health insurance for the employees, and we were able to realize a significant savings in the health insurance by switching carriers. In the 15 years that I've been here, we've been through probably four or five different carriers and have had some of them more than once. That's just a testament to our broker that we use to try to secure this funding for us, always making sure that we're getting the most efficient and quality healthcare coverage for our employees as we can. So we were able to save some money shopping that this year. The other thing I think is important to highlight is that all of our community activities, I think a lot of people in this community have really come to look forward to and enjoy things like Sun Fest, Spooktacular, the winter extravaganza, and those events are getting bigger and better, and we are continuing to be able to fund those events every year to provide basically what you would consider to be quality-of-life services for our residents. The other thing is in streets and sidewalks, and I'm going to revisit something that comes up every once in a while, more specifically, the paving on Pearl Street. This budget does include finishing out the Pearl Street project. Again, I want to remind everybody, we initially intended on paving Pearl Street, but when we were awarded the grant to put the broadband in and then also decided to replace the water lines in those areas, people on Reynolds Avenue, Buckley, they're very familiar with the brown water that they get in the water every once in a while, which is attributable to undersized water lines that predate all of us here in town. Those smaller water lines have a habit, because there isn't a lot of volume going through them, they have a habit of allowing natural sedimentation that's in the water to collect at the bottom of the pipe. And when somebody opens up a fire hydrant or flows a large volume of water, it basically turbulates the sedimentation, and that's where the brown water comes from. By increasing the size of these lines and getting away from the older lines, we can cut down on that brown water impact on some of our residents. The other thing that we are doing is we are installing additional fire hydrants for the fire department to have at their needs in the event of any fires in the community. And the other thing that's really important to go, sort of not really talked about, is basically creating a redundancy of water so that the fire department is not drawing water through a water grid system from one direction, or they're not trying to draw off a dead-end main. The next year, we're going to be looping a lot of our water systems to each other, and that's one of the main things we're doing on Mount Street, is extending all the water lines that are in Haynes Avenue, Pearl, Pogue, Mount Street. They're all going to be extended down to where Mount Street connects to Walnut so that we can connect directly to that 12-inch water line that's coming up out of, you know, from the Chesapeake Water Association. So that's going to give the fire department an enormous leg up in dealing with any kind of large fires that may or may not occur in the town of Rising Sun. It also does a lot to improving water quality in the town. So again, doubling back, we wanted to get all those lines in and done before we used our taxpayers' money to repay Pearl Street, just to turn around and tear it up again. These projects are expected to start breaking ground around August of this year. We're getting ready to go out to bid on the broadband and the new water lines. Once that is done, after the street is able to sit for a little bit and the trenches be able to settle, we'll move forward with the paving of Pearl Street and the areas that we dig up as a result of putting the new water lines in. So that's under the streets and sidewalks. Solid waste collection. If you remember, a couple of months ago, we talked about not putting the solid waste collection out to bid because we would realize a better savings of just continuing the agreement we have with the Haller Now, basically under the same annual increases that were in the original four-year contract. So that has resulted in us saving a fairly significant amount of money in that area. As I mentioned, in Park and Recreation, all of our community activities are fully funded. One of the things you're going to find is, in our dog park, we've always wanted to try to put hydrants in the dog park for both humans and canine. Believe it or not, those hydrants are incredibly expensive, anywhere upwards from like $6,000 to $8,000 for those approved hydrants. So we do have in the budget a line item to purchase those hydrants, but we're going to try to get some contributions from different businesses to try to pay for those hydrants. And essentially, the reason why I'm saying that, you're going to see in the closure, is as in the past, we are still in the process of trying to dig out of the sewer and water moratoriums that plagued this town for many years. So although the Maryland Commissioners have done a great job of not raising taxes over the last couple of years, and in fact, has actually lowered the taxes, and I'm going to highlight that in a second, they've actually lowered the taxes, we are still maintaining all those services that quite frankly, some of our other sister communities in Cecil County are not able to provide, like our own code department and our own police department. We are one of only two communities that does our own code enforcement and law enforcement, and obviously, there's a cost associated with that. We've been able to continue to provide those services and have actually been able to lower the taxes over the years, but we continue to balance our budgets with smaller sopluses than you might want to, with the idea that the investments that we made in water and sewer are going to lead to investments from the private sector, either in development or businesses coming into the community, that will bring in more real estate tax that way so that we don't have to raise taxes on our residents. So we're still able to do that, but the budget is tight, like it's always tight every year. The other area I want to remind everybody, because eventually, this is going to become an issue. I've talked about it last year for the first time, and that's the stormwater management in terms of our MS4 requirements, which, again, to recap, is essentially an environmental program aimed at protecting the waters of the Chesapeake Bay, which we all know the fishing industry is a major economic driver in Maryland's economy. And over the years, there's been a lot of water quality issues in the Chesapeake Bay that have negatively impacted fish and crabs and other aquatic life that are such an important part of Maryland's economy. So in order to turn that around, there's been a crackdown on wastewater treatment, which the town of Rising Sun is very familiar with what that crackdown did to the town of Rising Sun back in the early 2000s. And the next thing is the stormwater management, which now the town of Rising Sun is responsible for basically minimizing the negative impacts of rainwater, being able to just carry all the negative byproducts on the road, whether it be oil, gasoline, antifreeze, salt, stones, grass clippings, all that kind of stuff, ends up having a negative impact on the aquatic life in our streams, rivers, and the Chesapeake Bay. So we are now responsible for doing something about that. If you remember, last year this time, I highlighted to everybody that we are now required to do an annual report that shows what we're doing to stay on top of the stormwater management issues, but every five years, we have to essentially lower what I like to call, use the equivalency of a carbon footprint. We basically have to lower our nitrogen and other negative things that get into the streams and tributaries. We have to reduce that by 20%. There's a variety of ways we do that, by restoring stream beds, putting in new stormwater management ponds, planting trees. What I'm getting at is by 2025, December of 2025, the town of Rising Sun is looking at roughly a $1.7 million bill that we're going to have to spend to take the necessary steps to reduce the footprint. That is an unfunded mandate as of right now. There isn't a whole lot of state or federal funding being put forward to municipalities to be able to pay for that kind of stuff. So although we are, let me say it this way, sort of moving the elephant from the room one bite at a time, every year, we're spending a little bit more money in engineering to prepare for that so we can bring that $1.7 million down, but it is something that's looming in the near future that we're going to have to deal with. So on the last page here, you're going to see that we're looking at projected revenue of $2,473,879.19, and we're projecting expenses of $2,459,994.3 for a projected surplus in the budget of $13,885.16. Some members of the board that have been here for many years, you recall sometimes we balanced it with, you know, $1,500 in the account, projected surplus. Last year, we balanced the budget with a $16,701.26 surplus, but one of the things we've always been able to do and the way we structure our budget is that we don't want to have too many surprises in any given year. So we try very hard to budget the things that we think could be an unintended consequence or something that we need to do. We budget for it, but we either find a more economical way to do it, a more efficient way to patch some things together to get them to last a little bit longer, or we're able to basically kick the can down the road a little bit. And so when you look at the year-to-date budget variance in terms of what we have spent and what we spent year-to-date and what our projected expenses were going to be, we're at $427,203, basically to the positive. And if our revenue and expenses continue to some degree the way we think over the last two months of the year, we're going to be a lot closer to $100,000 surplus per se than we are the $16,000. Now, there's one qualifier on that, is that the projected revenue does include us doing a fund balance transfer, basically going into our rainy day fund. And if you remember, the rainy day fund is set aside. If we have to do those things that we absolutely can't kick down the road anymore, our budget has to fund transfer. Last year, we were looking to fund to move a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're not going to need to do that this year. Likewise, the expense is probably, is not going to happen either. So all in all, we balanced last year's budget with a $16,000 surplus. We're going to come in higher than that, which is consistent with what we've done for the last, you know, 15 years or so, we've been able to do that. On the water and sewer, as I've always said before, the water and sewer is pretty much straightforward. We're actually looking at a little bit of a decrease on the water fund side, on the revenue, and that's because we are not looking to do a transfer from reserve funds like we've done in the past. In other words, last year, we had a $300,000 transfer from the reserve fund into the water fund. This year, we're not budgeting for that, but one of the main reasons we're not budgeting for that is we do not have in our budget the town paying for the new public works building down at the wastewater treatment plant. And if you recall, that was like a $700,000 expense. It would have been shared in part by the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. We are not doing that because the town is actually in the running for a grant through the Maryland Department of Emergency Management because we were able to make a presentation a couple of months ago showing that the floodwaters that come off all the farmland above the sewer plant go into the old lagoon that we're not using anymore, and that lagoon is on the verge of overflowing at times, which goes back into our stormwater management and protecting aquatic life. So, and I hope I can explain this so it makes sense. I just said a couple minutes ago, we could have a $1.7 million expense to reduce our footprint by 20%. I just said that we're not funding in either the water, sewer, or general fund the $700,000 to put a new public works building down at the sewer plant. That public works building would have a belt filter press in it, which when we decommission the lagoon, we're going to have to deal with the sludge by way of a belt filter press, which is another estimated $1.5 million expense. If we are successful in getting this grant through the Maryland Department of Emergency Management, that will wipe out the $1.7 million stormwater management costs that I just said we have to look for. It will take care of the $700,000 new public works garage. It will take care of something we didn't even talk about yet, which is, at some point in time, the lagoon is going to have to be decommissioned, basically means drained out, dredged out, all the contaminated soil from it being a sewer plant over the years will have to be taken away at a cost of about $1.5 million, and then a belt filter press for a cost of $1.5 million would need to be purchased. So what I'm saying to you is that if we get this grant and it's fully funded, we will eliminate the $1.7 million expense, the $1.5 million expense to decommission the lagoon, the $700,000 expense to build a new public works garage, and a $1.5 million expense to purchase and install a belt filter press. So that would be a huge economic win for the town if our grant application to the Emergency Management Division is accepted, and that's all just simply born out of us being down at the wastewater treatment plant when Hurricane Ida came through in September of last year and being able to film the dramatic impact of all the water coming off all the upper farms, washing down into the lagoon, and darn near flooding it, overflowing it. And the Department of Emergency Management looks at that as a health and safety and a public safety issue. So they told us to go ahead and submit the grant. a public safety issue. So they told us to go ahead and submit the grant application. So we're working on that. So that's one of the big changes in the water fund is we're not doing the reserve fund transfer, but we're not showing the cost for the new public works garage. So when you look at page three of the water fund, our projected revenues are $1,134,872.13. Our projected expense is $1,517,267.77, but, which would put us in the hole, $382,395.64. But as we talk about every year, depreciation is a non-cash item, meaning we don't come out of our pocket to pay for depreciation. However, government accounting standards require us to show the depreciation of all of our capital outlay and our expenses as an expense on the expense side. So it's not money coming out of our pocket. So when you roll the $538,995 of depreciation out, we actually have a fund positive balance of $156,599.36. Now, here's the one little caveat to that, and it doesn't affect the water fund as much as it does the sewer fund. And that is, in government accounting standards, you're not required to show your principal payments on your debt service in your financial statements. You are required to show the interest. So in our budget, you're going to see a line item for interest paid on the debt service, but there's no principal. When you roll depreciate, or when you account for depreciation, that offsets what your principal payment is. So we're not truly going to see $156,000, yeah, $156,599.36 surplus because there is principal payments on the debt service that gets offset by that. We're still going to come in the positive, but it won't be that number. On the sewer fund, as I said, there's no fund transfer from reserve fund that we had last year. And again, that's mainly because we're not looking to have the town pay for the $700,000 public works garage. So when you go through this budget, again, we always take an aggressive stand to cover for potential sewer main breaks that would require a lot of money to fix. There is, however, one significant expenditure in here that I think is very important, in that in our wastewater treatment plant, when the wastewater comes into the plant, there is one and two pumps that are down there that are used to pump that wastewater through the various sections of the wastewater treatment plant. But we do not have a backup for that. And that is really scary because we are getting to the point where the wastewater treatment plant is eight years of age. And around 10 years of age is when you start to show some wear and tear on things. And we already had a $30,000 expenditure in the grit removal system a couple months ago because that component wore out. So my previous life, I was a wastewater treatment plant operator. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, we really should have a third pump to put in there. Otherwise, we could run into an issue where that, if the one pump goes down and we don't have a backup, that that wastewater will not go through the treatment plant the way it's supposed to. We could hypothetically be putting bad stuff out into the stream, which could result in large significant fines from MDE for contamination. So unfortunately, to buy one of those pumps, it's about $40,000 to buy that pump. So this budget includes that backup pump so that we're not caught shorthanded in the future and have a lot of unintended expenses occur as a result of that. Basically, everything else in here is what you saw a couple months ago, and it's consistent with what we've done in the past. Our other biggest expense is the service of a third-party operator to maintain the plant. That's about $180,000 in total for somebody to operate the wastewater treatment plant. We could hypothetically hire somebody to come in and operate the wastewater treatment plant, but unfortunately, the hours that are spent at the plant are not that great. And I want to try to make sure I explain this right. There are some disciplines to some degree that you don't mix together. They're just not a good mix. And if we were to hire a wastewater treatment plant operator who is trained in that, it's a high-level position, it costs a lot of money for one of these individuals to run the plant, they're not necessarily going to be the guy that's going to be riding on a lawnmower, cutting grass at the park, or filling potholes, or putting decorations up. It's just a hard mix to have that much disparity between the disciplines. And so we would be paying a lot of money for someone to really only be here three to four hours a day. But the most important reason why we don't bring our own person in is because by having a third-party operator, that third-party, all of their liability insurance would be in play if something happens. We have somebody to go to if something happens at the sewer plant as a result of operator error. So that's why, for the foreseeable future, we're going to continue to operate with the third-party operating the sewer plant. So when you look at the last page of the sewer fund, page six, you see our total projected revenue is $1,054,232.82. Our total expenses are $1,721,648.54. We are in the negative $667,415.72. Again, when you take depreciation out of $740,000, we have a positive of $72,584.28. But this is a case where the depreciation does not cover quite as much of the principal payment as we need. So we could be dipping into reserve funds in the future if we have some unexpected expenses, or if we're not able to get grant funding for certain projects. So that, these two, the water and sewer, are the reasons why our sewer and water rates are where they are. We've talked about in the past, not raising the sewer and water rates the way we said we were going to back in 2016, has put the town behind where we're really scraping the bottom of the barrel to be able to pay all the expenses, especially on the sewer side. So we've been trying to keep those sewer and water rates from escalating really high. And that's where the investments and new businesses and some residential developments are going to help us get to a point where we can actually, if not stabilize the sewer and water rates, be able to lower those sewer and water rates in the future. And just, I'll just close with real quickly. I gave you a scenario a couple months ago about one development that's looking to come in here. That development alone would generate $2.2 million of impact fees to the town of Rising Sun. That's before you even start talking about the sewer and water rates, those businesses or properties would be paying, and before you even talk about the real estate tax that you're going to collect. So that's why some development coming into the town of Rising Sun is vitally important to keep the taxes down for our residents, but more importantly, try to turn around the high sewer and water rates. So that concludes the budget overview. The only thing you have left is if you would like to adopt the resolution for the budget.
Town administrator, can you read in the record, Resolution 2021-12?
Sure. So Resolution 2021-12, a resolution adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and authorizing collection of taxes herein levied, assessing service charges, and appropriating funds for the fiscal year. I'm going to skip the first three boilerplates as we always do, go to the fourth one. Whereas, the town has received notice from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation that the final taxable net assessable real property base for the town of Rising Sun will increase by roughly $3,775,163, which would result in a projected increase of revenue for the 2023 fiscal year of roughly $17,365. And whereas, the town of Rising Sun, like other small municipalities, provides basic services such as street and sidewalk maintenance, parks, trash collection, and other amenities to our residents. However, Rising Sun is rather unique in the amount of other services that are provided through real estate revenues, such as daily police patrols and protection, weekly trash recycling and yard waste collection, movies in the parks, Sun Fest, Spooktacular, Winter Extravaganza, Shop with the Cop, Tiger Trot, Little League Parade, Carol Sing, and other family fun activities, all while still maintaining the fourth lowest overall tax rate of all Cecil County towns, and the second lowest real estate tax burden per resident in Cecil County. And whereas, the past two years have been difficult on our town and our residents, and it has challenged us to find creative ways to not only continue the critical services to our residents, but to also improve upon those services. And whereas, despite our community having to dig itself out of the decades-long water and sewer moratorium, the Maryland Commissioners have lowered the projected tax burden on our residents by 3.8% over a four-year period, and have positioned our community as one of the lowest tax rates per person in an incorporated town in Cecil County. And whereas, the town of Rising Sun is the only local government that provides a 2% discount on all real estate and debt service tax if it's paid in full by August 1, 2022. And whereas, the Maryland Commissioners continue to work diligently with the state and federal government in positioning the town to be able to receive funding for economic development and to create a business-friendly environment while also maintaining a safe community for our family and residents. And whereas, the Maryland Commissioners will continue to invest in our community in ways that have already shown to be beneficial, as played out by the number of new businesses opening, the resale value of homes in our community, and the increased volume of construction investments being made in many of our residential developments. And whereas, although the last two decades have been challenging, the patience and resiliency of our residents and businesses has clearly pushed our community to the front of the line as a place to raise a family and operate a business. And whereas, and to that end, the Maryland Commissioners have developed an annual operating budget for primary government and proprietary fund activities for fiscal year 23, see attached, that are designed to make investments in our infrastructure, Main Street revitalization, repave our roads, fix sidewalks, and offer additional amenities and services to our residents. And whereas, the primary governmental fund has a balanced budget by way of a reserve fund transfer to reflect possible expenditures that will be tied to the American Rescue Plan and the American Jobs Plan. The fund has a total revenue projection of roughly $2,473,879.19, and a projected expenditure of $2,459,994.3, and will result in a surplus of roughly $13,885.16. And whereas, the proprietary fund has a balanced budget with a total revenue projections of roughly $2,189,104.96, and projected expenditures without the depreciation of $1,959,921.32, and will result in a surplus of roughly $229,183.64. Whereas, this budget will be based upon the following established tax rates and service charges as follows. The tax rate for all real property not otherwise exempted and located within the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun shall remain at .46 cents for each $100 of assessed value as approved in Resolution 2022-06. The Cecil County Department of Finance will collect the real property and debt service and utility tax on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. The town will continue to provide a 2% discount upon payment in full of any real property tax if taxes are paid in full by the end of July 2022, and a 1% penalty each month for any payments received after October 1 of 2022 and until the balance is paid in full. Such taxes on land and improvement shall be computed on the valuation of said properties as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessments. The tax rate for all tangible personal property of business utilities or contract carriers operating in the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun shall remain at .99, $0.100 of assessed value of all tangible operating personal property, including commercial inventory. In computing and leveling, levying such taxes on tangible personal property, the valuation of said properties as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessment shall be used as the assessed valuation of tangible personal property. Number six, the town shall maintain the existing flat $384.36 debt service and utility tax assessment on all real property that is currently developed, who is vacant and not developed, but can be developed in accordance with the town zoning codes unless such properties declared non-developable and currently exempted is spelled out in Resolution 2016-10. The purpose of this assessment is to cover the code-related, the costs related to debt service financing of town buildings, parks, and property, pass utility upgrades, vehicle streets and sidewalk restoration. And regardless of the types of services provided, the level of services or the lack thereof, this assessment will be reflected on the annual real property tax bill issued by the county and will be subject to the same discounts and penalty fees as real property tax. Number seven, some revenue projections as shown in this budget are related to fees as indicated in the town's fee schedule as set by resolution from time to time by the Board of Commissioners. The town's utility rates will continue to follow the prescribed five-year phasing rate plan in place with the rates to match the projected charges for year 2023 as shown in the town's water and sewer rate table. Number nine, discounts for early payment of utility bills, failure to pay utility bills, building permits, and other service fees due the town will continue to be spelled out in the town's adopted fee schedule, which can be amended from time to time by resolution of the mayor and commissioners. Therefore, be it enacted and resolved that the Maryland Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wish to adopt the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual budget to include the tax rate and service charges as set forth above. And now, therefore, be it further resolved that the Maryland Commissioners have a pass approved and adopted this resolution on this ninth day of June 2022. And Mayor, if I would, I know you wanted to move on, but I think it's important to highlight this one thing. The debt service tax, if you look in the budget, people have always wondered what that debt service tax is. It is completely funding the loans that we take out on vehicles. If you look, it's within 2,000, the revenue is actually less than the expense of the debt service. So that was the reason why the town created that debt service tax, to be able to provide a vehicle to be able to finance important projects that are done at the town. Now, we're going to have debts that are going to be dropping off in the near future, but the 384 on all the properties is what's covering all the debt service, not the real estate tax. The debt service is covering that. That concludes my report. That concludes my report.
Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2021-12?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-12.
It's supposed to be 2022.
Second, I was actually going to point out in my comments that the title on the resolution is incorrect, but it's correct on the agenda.
Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Citizens input, would anyone like to speak this evening? Anyone? Moving forward into staff reports, town administrator?
No report.
Chief?
I've got a few topics I need to make sure you all are aware of. The first is the Police Accountability Board. It was mandated by the legislature to be in place by July 1st. We've encountered a lot of hurdles lately, and we, the county does not appear to be able to meet that deadline. I wanted to make sure you all are aware of it in case there is some backlash or, you know, consequences that may come about. I don't think there will be. But there are some things we need to overcome so we can create a fair and impartial process. The acquisition of vehicles, this has been almost nightmarish with the problems in the supply chain, the ability to order vehicles come and go within hours lately. Chevy had a bid or Chevy was accepting fleet orders, and their window was open for about nine hours, and it closed with many people still standing there with orders in hand. We were one of them. However, Ford is supposed to open a bid process here shortly, and we just have to switch which vehicles we're getting from Chevy to Ford and so forth. Because this is happening, I have started to look into other avenues of getting vehicles. I know the county is looking at a leasing program through Enterprise. However, if Enterprise can't get rental cars, how are they going to get fleet vehicles? So I have a lot of questions about that. But there are other vendors out there that we may be looking into to try to get some fleet vehicles. But beyond that, the town, if it gets too bad, the town's only one square mile. We'll go on bicycles. Lastly, personnel, we've completed all the testing. The fingerprinting is underway, will be underway next week, which finally gets us to the point where we need to identify a start date. I had been looking at the schedule, the fiscal year ending. The earliest I would like to start is the 26th. That is the last pay period in the 2023 fiscal year. And we'll be moving into the 2024, 2022 fiscal year. Yeah, 2022 fiscal year and moving into the 2023 fiscal year. So that's something that I guess we, Kelvin and I'll have to discuss and see if it's possible. But it looks great for acquiring personnel, but we still have to overcome that hurdle of how they're going to get around town.
Kelvin, I suggest that we do, we get them onboard as quickly as possible, please. We waited so long to finally get two people. I realize it's only a five-day or four-day window there, but it starts a pay period versus having to wait till almost mid-July. We could use the help.
Well, in the past, we've always sort of anticipated when a potential hiring date might be. We've funded like 75% of the salary with hypothetically a starting date of September. This year's budget has the starting date July 1st. So they're fully funded.
And that, that's the end of my report unless I have any questions.
Thank you. I have no report this evening except just to say a quick congratulations to those that graduated tonight from Rising Sun Middle School that are headed to high school, as well as those that just recently graduated Rising Sun High School. I was able to attend both ceremonies, and it was a wonderful event. Moving forward into commissioner comments, Commissioner Pearson.
Just, I'll be very brief. My signs are up. The painting has been done. Do not block the box. People already cannot see the signs because they're still double stacking in there. There will be a release date on when we will start enforcing it. Probably we will start with warnings and then proceed into actual tickets. But people, it's going to come because you can't follow directions. Thank you.
Commissioner Warnock?
I have no comments tonight, sir.
Mayor, the one thing, and Commissioner Barron is not here, who normally does the streets and sidewalks. It's important that we remind people that we put a stop sign up at Cherry and Wilson, and it's currently under a bag right now. I believe we're taking the bag off on June 17th, I believe it is. In the next week or two, the bag, the bag is going to come off. So there are, there will be stop bars there and that. And there are signs installed now letting people know that there is a stop sign up there. So I just want to remind everybody that there will be a four-way stop sign at Cherry and Wilson.
May I, Mr. Mayor? To piggyback on that, I would like to suggest we explore putting another four-way stop at Kirk's Court. That will slow traffic in that area completely because people come into town at a rapid rate. That may help slow, especially because there's narrow sidewalks there on one side of the street and none on the other. And kids are walking to and from the park and Little League. We may have to explore putting another stop sign, a four-way stop down, a three-way stop at the other intersection.
You can see upcoming town meetings. We will be attending the MML conference next week. You can also see trash recycling and yardway schedule on the agenda. Is there anything else to come for the board this evening? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.